United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We ask that you be with us today, provide us wisdom and guidance as we make decisions that impact our students and our entire district. Thank you for our many blessings. There's so many things that we're thankful for and that we live in the best country in the world. Just continue to guide us and lead us to a place where we can continue to be fruitful and happy and educate our children. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. And while we're getting ready for our presentations, just want to say a special thank you to all of you that are here this afternoon to be a part of this, be it your child being recognized or whatever the case may be. We thank you for knowing that it is important that we support our young people and this great educational institution and district, Putnam County. So with that being said, we will go in this order. Teacher of the Month, we're going to take care of that. The Animal Rescue, Florida Forest Service Retiree Recognition by Mrs. Whitaker, Thrive Scholars, CTE Month, and Bond Oversight Committee. We will go in that order. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. I'd like to call up HCA and our Putnam Foundation for Education up to honor our teachers.
Hey, do you want to discuss the product or do you want me to just call them? Okay, alright, go ahead.
Alright. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just a few minutes, I'm gonna have my board member step on up here. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Les Sims. I'm chairman of the Board for the Education Foundation of Putnam County. I'd like to start by saying thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity on behalf of my Board to recognize just a few of the outstanding teachers that's in the district. For those of you who do not know, HCA has really made an effort to step into our community and get more involved, as you're seeing today. This is just one of the small products that they've approached us with. So, thank you, David, for coming in and rewarding our teachers. As you can see, we have $2,500 obligated for Teacher of the Year and partnering with us for that. But they do so much more, not with just the foundation, but bread of life and feed the need. And if you look around, you're gonna see their name everywhere these days. So, thank you, HCA, for doing what you're doing. So we'll keep this short and sweet. We have two teachers that we're going to go ahead and give a check to today for this month. First, I'll start with Carol Bogdan. And... Carol, come on up. Can we maybe get to the middle of the room?
Do you want me to read about her real quick?
Yes, absolutely. I did not know you had a bio.
Yeah, I do have. Okay. So, before the end of the school year, you're gonna see each high school and Mellon Learning Center honor one teacher each. And so Carol is actually the Interlaken Junior/Senior High School HCA recipient for January. Amber Simons writes, "Carol Bogdan exemplifies the portrait of a graduate characteristics. She is an engaged collaborator who attends and contributes to all district and school-based ELA/PLC's. She models best teaching practices at school-based PLCs and is always willing to support her colleagues with whatever they need. Carol is also an innovative problem solver, fearless learner, and resilient individual. When a need arose at the school, she volunteered to take on additional classes and responsibilities by teaching a Cambridge course. This required her to attend additional professional development and collaborate with other educators worldwide. Carol is also a confident communicator. When she has questions or concerns, she doesn't mind speaking up and will work diligently to ensure students get what they need. She also practices global citizenship. She participates in community events and attends sporting and club events. It's commonplace to see her attending student games in support of them as well. Carol truly has ram pride and loves to cheer on her students. She is Interlaken Junior/Senior High School's proud recipient of the HCA Teacher of the Month."
Alright, next on the list will be Erin Delaney.
The February HCA Teacher of the Month is Erin Delaney, a teacher from Crescent City Junior/Senior High School. Erin was born and raised in Crescent City, graduated from our high school, completed college, and actually made her way back home. She has over 23 years of experience and over the past 12 years, Erin has taught art. Erin embodies all six pillars of the portrait of a graduate. The pillar that best represents Ms. Daily is being a global citizen. I see Erin contributing to making our community, our county, our state, and our world a better place. She is an active participant within the art community and supports many local businesses within Crescent City and Palaca. You can find evidence of this by visiting Taylor Douglas Realty, Wynn Dixie, as well as Dr. Chapman's office to see her artistic ability from her as well as her students. She is our National Honor Society sponsor who seeks to support students in and out of the classroom and making them productive members of our society. Through the work of her and her students, Erin demonstrates respect, compassion, and empathy for our fellow community members. Congratulations, Erin.
That's great. Welcome. Yes. I would like to sponsor.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good afternoon. My name is Jeannie Oakwood. I am the president of ARC Animal Rescue in South Putnam. And first of all, I want to thank Holly for giving me and our nonprofit organization an opportunity to talk to you about animal welfare and maybe an educational program that we would like to sponsor. I am an educator. I'm a college educator. But I also fell into animal welfare here in Putnam County. ARC has been around in Crescent City Kennel, which I own, since 2018. Our accomplishments for a little tiny rural rescue are the following. 2023, we implemented low-cost vaccine clinic. We vaccinated over 570 animals. A rabies is only $10. We have provided spay and neuter vouchers. 2022, 150, and last year we did 275. I'm very active with the high school. I've spoken as a guest there at the Health Occupation Student Academy. And I really am also a part of the Advisory Committee for Animal Control. Thea is a board member and she's with me here today. And what I do click. We want to reduce animal abuse, neglect, and cruelty and abandonment, increase awareness of importance of spay and neutering, excuse me, improving the awareness of veterinary care, and also decreasing dumping of animals in our community. Between Thanksgiving and Christmas, I've never had 26 puppies, eight weeks or younger. Pretty soon it's kitten season. Did you know that one cat in seven years can produce 370,000 kittens? Okay? I also want to mention that this is not only focused on animals, dogs, and cats. As you know, we are agricultural. So, we also have chickens, goats, horses, et cetera, et cetera. And we want to be able to provide Putnam County School Board and their teachers, wonderful educators. My husband retired from the Crescent City High School. The good half, I'm the other half. And it could be infused in the existing curriculum as we speak. ARC supports as much as possible everything that I've given the board members is free. No cost whatsoever. We are looking at maybe also inquiring about school clubs and associations as well. We really believe the team is Putnam County leaders, which are right up here. Of course, your teachers, educators at elementary, middle, and high school, community associations, as well as ARC Animal Rescues and other rescue groups there are in Putnam County. There are some statistics there. One on male, female, excuse me, was 67,000. Look at the kittens, 370,000. Unbelievable. Florida is the top three fatal dog bite stats, number three. 70% of dog bites are dogs that are not neutered. And in Jacksonville, there are some statistics that have improved in spay and neutering. Walt Disney said it the most. The way to get started is to quit talking and begin doing. And that's why we're here today. We need to educate our youth on the importance of pet responsibility as well as spay and neutering, as well as filtering that information to their homes, their families, et cetera. And here are some examples that we have provided you. I already mentioned about clubs and associations, demonstrating best practices throughout the year, as well as Pet Awareness Month, which is coming up in May, and doing some creative projects that the kids in this community would be very, very engaged. Every child likes animals of some sort. Like I mentioned earlier, look at all the resources. All these are free. And my assistant is going to demonstrate something so simple as a book and show them the front of the pillow. And here are some other examples. Kindness and Respect for All posters that are free. And we have several books that also can be incorporated. I am bilingual. I really, truly believe that this can be done in English and in Spanish. We have a lot of Hispanics that live in our community. And the children, in fact, are very engaged when I see them with their little Chihuahuas or their little German Shepherds at the low-cost vaccine clinic. And they only speak Spanish and we talk to them about animals and they are fascinated. And like I mentioned, the Humane Society of the United States has several versions in Spanish and in English. Play is safe with dogs. In fact, I went to Crescent City's town meeting and Sheriff's Department did a report and they are incorporating veterinary classes for the inmates that will also help with animal services as well. So we can do a lot of things. I want to emphasize on the second point. Children will treat their animals at home with care, be responsible for the day-to-day responsibilities, and also show them empathy, awareness. A lot, I've seen some adoptions that brought tears to my eye where the child has autism or the child has anxiety and they meet that dog or cat and the instant bond. And the anxiety goes down and they start talking. And they're in a strange, a different location. Also, as you know, from Facebook, especially if you're animal lovers, you see the amount of dogs being dumped, hit by a car, dog bites. I know there's dog fighting as well as rooster fighting in this county. And we need to make our children aware of all this. In conclusion, we want to teach the next generation of caregivers. We hope to affect and change the larger long-term outcome for huge animal welfare problems in our county and into the most positive story. This is not going to cost the county any money. All the things that we have provided the school board and we appreciate their time are free. We also are allowed to pursue some grants. After I get some statistics of how many children are in each school and what books that the teachers would like. You can infuse this in math, biology, storytime, reading, history, and for our middle and high schoolers, animal science, as well as maybe teaching them veterinarian texts. I also provide community services for high schoolers at the kennel. So there are many, many, many options. So I want to leave for questions and Ms. Thea would like to say a word.
The other thing I want to mention, I've been in animal welfare for about 40 years. I've worked all around the country. I live in Interlaken now. Love it here in Putnam County. But I don't like what's going on in terms of the animal welfare issue. And I lived previously, period of time back in, about 10 years ago, I was living in the Caribbean. And I was living in a place that had a very similar, what I call, set of circumstances here. And it was really a lack of education that was prevalent in terms of a culture that said, hey, it's okay to let animals run. It's okay to let them be unspayed and neutered. It's all okay. And it was really from ignorance that a lot of it continued to get out of hand. And we had all this abandonment and stray dogs and hit dogs. And it affects families. Children are so, you know, it's such an effect when something happens to their animals, when they're lost, et cetera, and they don't understand. But, you know, parents not knowing, not knowing what to do. We started an initiation project there. Both spay and neuter, low-cost spay and neuter, which we're working on as well. But aside from that, the other key component of that was education in the schools. And we had a vigorous education program in the schools. And in a period of time, those numbers were down by 50%. That's significant statistically. And it was due to public education, school infusion that was very active. And it was done very similarly in terms of curriculum within the school system, integrated into other programs. And the other thing I want to mention is these curriculums are not, resources are not only free, but there's a big emphasis on kindness and empathy and responsibility. And I think those are key things to teach at all levels as we build citizens, good citizens, out of our school district, that those specifically correlate. And so these curriculums are really bent around supporting those kind of issues to support children in developing those skill sets, which I think we would all suggest are really, really important. There's also another relatable situation. And that has to do with the connection between animal education and those skill sets we talked about of empathy, kindness, and justice. And there's a lot of statistics that show there's correlation between neglect, abuse, and violence related to animal issues. So when you start to educate children in that regard, you actually can bring down those issues as well, whether it's abuse in the home, violence in your community, that you're teaching skill sets that are going to benefit the children, the family, and the community at large. So there's a huge piece to this beyond just, you know, trying to benefit animal welfare here. It's really benefiting the children, benefiting the families and the communities with all of this. And there's so much demonstrated efficacy for this. There are programs all over the country that have used these methodologies and have seen great results. And we can point you again and again to those programs that have been effective. And so we're not really reinventing the wheel. We're really bringing to you really efficacious programs that we think are going to make a difference for the kids, the community, and this county. So thanks for your time.
So, what is our next step? How can we help you? So, I'm sure you need further discussion on this. My email and Holly knows how to contact me as well. I really would like to start this as soon as possible, but I would need some statistics on the sense of how many children do you want us to serve? Do you want us to start at elementary level? Do you want us to start at the high school level? Whatever you think is best, we are on board. Anybody have any questions?
And you can reach out to my office. We can have a conversation.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Already.
My name's Aaron Levine. I'm the forest supervisor down on Malaca State Forest with the Florida Forest Service. I've been the supervisor there since last year. And so what I have here is a check for the Putnam County School Board. It's to the attention of Mr. Rick Surancy, Superintendent, coming from our Commissioner of Agriculture, Wilton Simpson. Of course, forestry being under the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. And this is the receipts for, I believe it's 10% of timber sale receipts that are in Putnam County, come locally to the school board whenever we have those. And this actually occurred before my time. So you know the process of getting everything done. But I'm here to present this to you.
Thank you.
Thought he was just in a big hurry to get that check.
Well, we used to get a lot more money, but they quit planting pine trees on state property. They're going back to native timber, you know, and it's just not... It doesn't grow the volume of timber that we used to get. We used to get hundreds of thousands a month.
Good afternoon. I am thrilled to be here today again to present to you and recognize our four retirees that we have had over the last couple of weeks. So when I call you up here and recognize you, if you'll just come on up, I'm going to hand you your resolution. And then if you'll stand right here, we'll get a picture of all four of you with Superintendent and the chairperson at the end. Ms. Shirley Treasure, she has worked with School Food Service as the General Assistant at Crescent City Junior/Senior High. She worked with us for four years and five months. Is Ms. Treasure here? We'll make sure we get that to her. Ms. Deborah Perry, she was a bus aide with our Transportation Department in the west end of the county. And she had been with us for five years and five months. Mr. Gerald Jerry Stradling, he has been a head custodian. His last place was at Interlaken Junior/Senior High School. He's been with us at the district for 18 years and eight months. Come on up, Mr. Stradling. That makes it official.
Yes.
Not really. Like official was that signature you had with Ms. Crowley. Alright, and our last honoree that we are recognizing today is Ms. Lisa Parsons. She has been a teacher. She was also a board member. And she recently has been at Robert H. Jenkins Junior Elementary School. And she has served the district for 32 years and six months.
Listen, this lady was my mentor teacher, so you gotta slide over.
No, we've got three. Three more. Thrive Scholars.
Madam Chair?
Okay, good afternoon. I am pleased to introduce Hannah. Come on up, Hannah. Oberholzer from Thrive Scholars. It's a national nonprofit we have been partnering with in Putnam County schools. Through donations from corporate entities, private individuals, and foundations, Thrive supports students of color and first-generation college students with the goal of helping these students attain entry into top 100 colleges and universities and/or Ivy League universities. Thrive works with the students in paying for tuition and room and board. And I particularly love the part, and she'll get into this in more detail, where they have our Thrive students participate in summer programming to learn calculus, English, and critical thinking skills in the summer at a university free of charge. With that being said, let me turn it over to the amazing Hannah and three of our students. Come on up, guys.
I'm going to talk a little bit about Thrive, but stand in front. We are really here today to honor your incredible Thrive Scholars from Putnam County. We have Kamaya, Damonte, and Trayvon, who, as you hear more about the intensity of our program and the commitment and time that these young people have taken to further their education and really reach their dreams. You're going to be just as impressed as I have been. But Thrive Scholars is a college-to-career accelerator. We work with high-achieving students of color and first-generation college students to help them get into top-tier universities and graduate with high-trajectory careers so that they can create economic mobility and financial security for themselves. So our program is a six-year continuum of support. We start work with students, we actually have two programs. We start work with students in sophomore year of high school and then through college into early career. During that timeframe, we focus on kind of five key inflection points in a young person's journey to help remove barriers to success and create opportunities just to help them realize the potential that they have. We start our program with Summer Academy that Melissa was mentioning. Our scholars travel to Amherst College for six weeks. Our scholars travel to Amherst College for six weeks where they study three hours a day of calculus, three hours a day of writing taught by college professors, where they can foster their critical thinking skills and get prepared for the rigor, the academic rigor of college, all while living on a college campus, traveling on a plane often for the first time, meeting students from across the country with shared experiences, backgrounds, and vision, and goals, and their hopes and dreams. And then our scholars work one-on-one with a college access manager who helps them navigate the college application process, the financial aid process, scholarship opportunities, so that our scholars are attending the best-fit schools for them that will help them achieve their dreams, goal being to go to school with little to no debt. So as Melissa mentioned, over 90% of our scholars go to top 100 universities, 40% go to Ivy League institutions, 50% go to top 50 institutions. And then our scholars go again to Summer Academy, because if one summer of six weeks studying wasn't enough, they do it again in Chicago before they get ready to enter school. And then when they go to school, they're working one-on-one with a case manager, a college success manager, to help them navigate that transition to school. It's a big leap, it's a big life-altering transition, so we want to make sure that, you know, you're doing all right, you're making friends, your social and emotional well-being is great, your families are doing well with that transition. And then that sophomore through senior year of school, our scholars will work one-on-one with a career coach. So we have six career pathways, and our career pathways are focused in industries that predominantly will help our scholars attain that financial security and create that economic mobility for themselves. And we know it looks different if Damonte wants to go to medical school, he wants to be a cardiothoracic surgeon, Trayvon wants to enter into the finance world potentially, we're still exploring. But those interviewing skills, the resume, it's going to look different in those two careers. Kamaya wants to enter clinical, be a clinical pharmacist, is that correct? Yes, didn't want to leave her out. But all those skills that you need to enter into those fields are different, so we want to make sure that you have the tailored supports to get our scholars where they need to be, the internships that you want. We're there every step of the way to make sure that you're achieving your dreams. So all that to say, it is a really high-touch, tailored program that requires hard work, dedication, a commitment to furthering your education, and I cannot speak highly enough of the partnership we've had with Putnam County. So we launched in northeast Florida just last year welcoming this first cohort of scholars, and we're in the process of our application, or in our second round of application process this year. And the commitment, the belief in our mission between the district here, your counselors, your principals, it really was just unmatched. It was truly incredible to see the, how your counselors specifically went above and beyond. Melissa emailed me every step of the way, how many students are applying, let me make sure that we're getting the word out. In round two, we've got about 11 students from QI Roberts, we have 10 students from Crescent City, four from Palatka, and one to two from Interlaken who have moved through the application process. So we're working hard with all of your schools, and I just can't speak highly enough about the partnership that we forged here in Putnam County, and I'm looking forward to years to come of the good work. And you'll see these three in six-ish years maybe, the next change-makers of this community and leaders. So just really proud of them and excited to be here today to honor their work. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions for the students? These are students that have been in the program one year, so these are our first students.
Congratulations. Very good. Are they, are they from, what schools are they from?
Will you all tell us what schools you're from?
I'm from Palatka High.
I'm from QI Roberts.
My name is Anakubon, I'm a junior at Palatka High.
My name is Yimai Hall, I'm a senior at QI Roberts.
Like you like each other.
No, Melissa gets it, and she can give it to you. Okay.
No bond oversight. Yep.
After me?
It's bond oversight. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Board. Just to let you know a little bit about career education, this month is CTE Month, and if you drove by the district last week, we had, or the week before last, we had our sign-out on the front lawn. This week, it's been at Palatka High School, Palatka Junior Senior High School, and last week, it was at Crescent City Junior Senior High School. So we do not have a signed document from, or proclamation yet from the governor, so, but it is CTE Month, and we have been honoring our CTE teachers as we go into the schools. Last week, we had a wonderful lunch with our teachers at Crescent City, and we were in our new building construction workshop that we opened this year. And today, we had breakfast with the career education teachers at Palatka High School. So you can also see on our Facebook page, we've been diligent with putting things on our page, and also with the school district website. Next week, we'll be at Interlaken High School, and we will have lunch with, done by our chef in our culinary program next week. And then the last week of the month will be with QI Roberts. Today, I have brought with me Mr. Eddie Parcher, who came before you last year, and he was in his first year of our building construction program, and just for him to give you a little bit of an update at Interlaken Junior Senior High School.
What a difference a year makes. Lot of difference. So anyway, no, this year, you know, we're blessed, we have second-year students, we have many first-year students, and a lot of things are going on. One is that our second-year students are learning, we have learned about electricity this year, we've learned how to wire switches, three-way, four-way switches, build switch receptacles. And this week, we are actually in the process of building rooms, a stud wall room, and what I'm going to do is put four load centers, which those are, if you will, your breaker panel. But anyway, I'm going to teach them how to cut in a panel, how to wire the panel, how, what's the process, how to tie down your grounds, your neutrals, and also your hot wires to the breakers, and just teach them a little bit about that. Our first-year students have been doing a lot of carpentry work, we have done, we've built some birdhouses, we have done picnic tables, and we just finished up a project where we were doing what was called a star. And what that does, it incorporates the different degrees and cutting, and teaches them how to measure a piece of wood that has a different degree in it and measure it correctly. And so it teaches them how to do that, and also how to use automatic nailers, as far as battery-operated nailers. We did get a chance to go down and visit with Bartow High School, it was a very encouraging and educational trip. I had one student that was so led that he is ready to learn how to speak better publicly, and we are going to put together a, for the end of the year, a recruitment slide for the program at the high school, and he is going to be the spokesperson for it. So I think they're going to respond to him much better than they probably responded to me, and just because he's just one of them, if you will. So I think that's a really good idea, and it has just been, it's really been a good journey this year. I'm just, a much more settled place for it, so, and our students are excited, and they are learning.
How many students do you have in both years?
Oh, through two years, we have, and with the students we had last year and the students we have this year, we're around 140 students, as far as the two years combined.
Awesome.
Very good. Very, very good.
I would like to get a picture, my team is here. And Dr. Surancy?
Good. Lock me up.
Well, you've got so many people saying that we don't do shop. Thanks, Eddie.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Superintendent, or Dr. Superintendent, Dr. Surancy, and welcome, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you.
I'm here today, Jared Dollar, as your Board Oversight Chairperson. We had a committee meeting in January, and our committee had some concerns on some changes that have been made, and they asked me to come and speak directly to the Board, so that's why I'm here. I don't envy any of y'all, especially when it comes to this building schools, this is just a humongous process, I'm glad to be a part of it, but it's not going to be easy and never expected to be. I do have one other committee member, Ms. Jones, Yvette Jones, in the audience, she's, she held over from another presentation earlier, so I'm glad she's here. I wanted to talk a little bit about, I did this last time, I didn't expect to be back this soon, but our process as an oversight committee, one of the things that we're doing is, and I want to make sure we're on the same page, is we're seeing everything kind of after the fact. So when we're looking at finances, and we're looking at things that are happening, it is really already happened. So I want you to be aware of that, that contracts, anything like that is being done with staff coming to you, and then we're seeing it later. We're not seeing any of that ahead of time, I just want to make sure that you understand that. In January, like I said, there were a couple of changes, and you already know about them, but we had enough concern that we thought we should address you directly and talk about it. The first one is the delay on Palatka A, which is the site at Horseman Club Road. The delay that was announced was based on an issue with wetlands. If you go back to our September Oversight Committee meeting, we asked directly if there were wetlands on that property, if they'd be an issue. We were told that the permits would be submitted in October, and there would not be an issue. Now we're five months later, it's an issue, and the construction manager that was at our last meeting said if we have another delay, the school will not be open in time. I asked for an explanation, actually asked for a written explanation, and was told I'm not going to get it. So I think that needs to be discussed. The second issue, and this one's not as, it's not going to happen as soon, but the second issue is the thought of closing James A. Long and using the current Kelly Smith campus as Palatka B, is what it's called now, because it doesn't have an official name. Our committee raised a few issues with that idea. We were told, and you were told as a board, that the reason James A. Long would be closed is because of its proximity to the railroad tracks. That's the only information that either of us publicly have been told. I did ask how many children have been on the railroad track or hit by a train, I was told that number's zero, so I'm not sure that the railroad tracks are really an issue. But if you do that, you've got two elementary schools within two miles of each other, Horseman Club Road and Kelly Smith, current Kelly Smith. We already have a shortage of bus drivers, so now you're going to bus kids from the city of Palatka to one of those two schools. I don't know the number, but I have a good feeling there's a number of students that walk to James A. Long to school, that are now going to have to be taken by bus or a parent. That's a burden on that part of the community. I also think you just need to think about the community. That takes, the city of Palatka will have zero public schools, and I think you need to think about that hard. Mosley's campus was not considered due to cost, and there were some numbers on the screen. I think you need to go back and look at those numbers, study them hard, and see if having a elementary school in the city of Palatka needs to happen or not. That's, again, your decision. I did check, you know, the Palatka A, Mosley, Kelly Smith are all about the same acreage, so I think any of those schools could hold a school. The last thing that was a change was the idea of now rehabbing Aquila and Melrose instead of rebuilding, and it's just, it's kind of ironic that the reason to rehab Melrose is because of the community uproar in possibly closing that school. I think if you, if it gets known, and I don't know that is, that James A. Long is going to be closed, or Mosley's going to be closed forever, I think you're going to have the same issue, and I think you need to get ahead of it. The last thing, and this is me personally, this is not coming from the committee, is as these projects continue for the next probably 10 years, you may want to have a separate advisory committee. There's an advisory committee for design, and, you know, the colors, the carpets, Sarah James is in charge of that. We may want a separate committee on the advisory side before some of these things happen, before some of these decisions are made. Again, we're seeing it afterwards, you may want to have a separate committee of a few people in the community to look at things ahead of time, and that's what I have for you today.
Jared, I appreciate all that you've done, and I've enjoyed watching some of the oversight committees. I would like to come and see a few more in the future. I don't remember a meeting since we got into this process that we didn't say that things were going to morph and change throughout this process. Having been through a bond issue years ago when I was a young administrator and saw what it, what happened, and who got mad in the communities and who didn't, and fusses over schools and names and all that kind of stuff, it's a very tough process. But I think in the final analysis, we're going to continue to change, there's going to continue to be things that unknowns that'll change, and school districts don't have construction engineers that work for them. We've got instructional people, and obviously, every school district that I know of in the state of Florida, except maybe Metro Dade, would have, would go out and hire construction management to turn it over to them, to work under the supervision of the district and you guys, and that's why you get it after the fact. And I'm not taking up for anybody that may have done something wrong, that's just the way that, the way it works in the state of Florida, and I'm sure in other districts throughout America, but this whole thing is going to continue, and we're going to think we've got it figured out, and it's not going to be figured out. It's going to change, I don't care who's here, you know, Superintendent, I talked right down to the wire on this thing, and, you know, the people of Putnam County wanted new schools, and they're the ones that decided, and, you know, even with, I've heard people talk about bond language on the ballot, I mean, we pay an attorney, one of the best in the state, to make language that complies with ballot verbiage to go on, and then you've got people that complain about it. So, you know, it's, you're going to, you can build new schools and people are not going to be happy. I understand the state now won't allow you to build next to railroads, I understand why that is, that is absolutely stupid to have ever had a school next to a railroad, but I didn't, I wouldn't, you know, I wasn't around in those days. But it's, there's something that's, I know that Superintendent and his team are working with, and you don't know, we may get a 2,000-acre subdivision coming here pretty soon, who knows what's going to happen, but 10 years is a long time to try to sort this out, and we've got the time to plan and think, and everything you said is very valid.
And then that's why we're not being critical, but the committee was, had enough concern that they said, can you please just present these to the Board?
Very valid, but I appreciate so much you let us know. That's good.
Mr. Leary, and then Mrs. Wagner.
So my understanding on the wetlands issue, and ironically, I do some work for clients, I don't do wetland designation, but I get the district out there to look at the site before they buy it or before they farm it, in my case.
And, you know, the administration, I mean, they, they were dependent on the consultant, and the consultant dropped the ball.
Somebody did, right.
You know, it's, it's really pretty easy to recognize when you've got hydroxyls where there's water, and you've got certain vegetation, it's a clear indicator. And so I was just flabbergasted at that, but, you know, it really, I think the civil engineer who's doing that just absolutely dropped the ball, and that's unfortunate. You know, the, the thing that really bothers me is that, you know, them refusing to give a written explanation. Because, I mean, technically, you're an arm of the district and, you know, working with the school board, so I do have some consternation with that. And I was at James A. Long for the reading program week, and I read to two of the classes, a lot of fun. And I looked at that, you know, the building. It's structurally, you know, pretty solid. I mean, that, that's one that may, could be, you know, depending on the, the population that we're, be projecting to be there, could be done with. But we're, we're just, you know, I think trying to get the puzzle and all the pieces to go in. But I, I for one recognize the concern and, and of the community in maintaining a, a elementary school over there. I think, I think it's important, if at all possible. So, and I for one appreciate the work that the Bond Committee is doing. I just had one other question. Have y'all had a presentation from the tax collector yet about?
Our meeting next week, next Wednesday. That will be on our agenda.
All right, thank you.
I may be reporting back after that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jared.
Sorry, I just had my questions typed out and died on me. I just want to understand a little better the process here, because you guys are our advisory committee.
Oversight committee.
The bond oversight committee. So is, is, is the purpose of that oversight committee to look at what we have done and then tell us whether it was a good idea or not? I mean, because I'm, I'm a little confused if it's an oversight committee to, in order to make a difference, it sounds to me like you need to know this stuff before we have much to do with making decisions.
I can't agree more, and maybe it's a separate committee, but our, our job is to really watch the money, make sure the money that the taxpayers are paying is going to school construction, not going to a new project that's not part of that ballot language, or, so that's.
So what good, what good does all of that work in all of that review and all of those questions do?
If you come to our meeting next week with the tax collector, you'll see. But that's, I mean, there's things that are happening that we are catching. But I still agree that an advisory committee of some sort at the front end might be helpful.
Why could it, I mean, I.
Or could we do both?
That's kind of what I'm thinking. We have a group of people that are involved in looking into all of where the, I mean, the money is a very important, that's a whole lot of money.
My only hesitation to us doing both is we haven't had a meeting that's been under two hours yet, and we're looking at the, at just our piece of it. Now, we go off on tangents, just like everybody does in a meeting. I personally would think an advisory committee made up of folks in the community with some construction experience, you know, not necessarily anyone bidding on the pros, any of the projects, obviously, but something like that may make more sense. You know, a lot of, we can follow money, we can ask questions about money, but I'd fail Mr. Parker's class. I mean, it's just, I'm not going to come and give you any advice on building something.
When, when, but you are saying you're catching some things that then are fixable? At the point you're catching them?
Hopefully, they're fixable, yes.
Okay. And will, will we be informed of those? I mean, will you continue to come give us, I'm assuming?
Dr. Searcy and I have learned a lot the last couple of weeks, so.
The state of Florida is very clear on competitive bid process for anything that's done in construction.
And just my last thing, I didn't catch, like you said, you were, they said you, they refused to give you a written explanation. Who is?
It was someone in the district, district staff. I was told it would cost money to get that in writing and to not expect it. I don't want to say it publicly.
I, I understand, but I'm. Specifically, tell me again what you were asking an explanation about?
Of the delay in the wetlands, in the mitigation of wetlands and the permitting. We were told in October that the permits were being submitted to St. John's River Water Management, and as of our meeting, whatever that date was, third week in January, it had not been done yet. And the, I don't remember all the titles, but one gentleman that's usually there, construction manager, was not present, but it's an engineer under him, so the district does not hire this person. But I was told that's the person that, as Mr. Leary said, probably dropped the ball. That person, I don't even know who it is.
They're way understaffed out there and way behind on all their, their stuff.
Yeah, now, now you're basically, you're begging for permits to be done quickly, because we're already behind.
Phil, I would have thought, and Linda, to your question on mitigation, I would have thought they would, might even waive that and let us utilize it, being a state entity, but they.
Let me tell you something.
I understand.
There's no much waiving anything. It's a.
There can't be much of a quarter of an acre there.
And I think the retention pond's been moved three times. Because of trying to get, basically, trying to get it fit.
I remember.
There is a de minimis test, which if it doesn't, you're not, you know, damming or discharging or altering the flow that you can get, but it has to be under, I think, a half acre or a quarter acre. I mean, it's, it's, it's a difficult thing to do and meet. But we do have some people that can make some calls out there and see if they could expedite it for us.
And Mr. Dollar, to reiterate what Mr. Leary stated about the job that you all are doing. I mean, we thoroughly appreciate that and.
Thank you.
The concerns that have come up over the James A. Long situation and how you're handling it. But the key here is what you already alluded to. You said that you and the superintendent are talking, and you are hearing what suggestions and this, that, now that Mr. Bowlen are part of the process, because it's going to take us working together to get the best out of this. Now that we're in it.
We're in it.
We're in it now.
We're in it deep now.
So we're in it to win it, and so the only way we can win it is we work together. And so with you all doing that, we, we're going to work it out, and if you know some of those people. If I have to let you hold my phone.
Make sure they're friends.
You make some calls, yeah.
Madam Chair, I do want to say that, and again, Jared and I have met a couple of times, I think, Mr. Bowlen and, and also Ms. Odom and Mr. Odom have met with, and just sharing information, because that committee, as you know, is under the sunshine law, so again, they can't get together. So we, we worked through Mr. Dollar, tried to meet with him prior to our meetings, and what we knew at the time, you know, we, we tried to share that. And again, it is incumbent on us to be as transparent as possible. At the same time, we have things happening literally from day to day. And Mr. Bowlen can tell you, it is, he's getting a call, and he's meeting with people every day on this. So, you know, we want to be as upfront, and, and we are working through him. I met with, was it last week or the week before?
Week before.
Preparing for the next meeting. So again, they're doing a tremendous job, and, and again, we want them to be able to watch the money and make sure it's being spent in the way it's supposed to be spent. But again, y'all have said many times, there are a lot of moving parts. We've had to, you know, kind of pivot because of some of the rising costs. But again, talking about James A. Long and Mosley and a lot of that, we've done some comparative cost studies. And again, when the architect got with us, the railroad was and is an issue, even though the state will not fund, will not provide state funds to build a school near a railroad. The rationale is, and of course, nobody's been hit on the railroad yet, but again, there are always an opportunity where there could be an accident, a chemical spill, that type of thing. There's always that potential, so that's the rationale why they don't want new schools built there. And of course, under the bond, it's a different situation. But there are also some other factors at James A. Long that we are looking at. And I told the committee, we will come back with a cost report on James A. Long and provide that. Our architect's working on that, so we want to make sure they have all the information. And again, as far as closing schools, we haven't announced we're closing James A. Long or, or Mosley, because we are anticipating, again, this is just, I don't have my crystal ball with me right now, but this is anticipating an increase in growth because of our local community's growing, a lot of businesses are coming, and we want to be able to have schools available if we need them to accommodate the additional growth, okay? Because they only let us build these new schools based on the current projections right now. So these schools could provide additional, you know, space for incoming students. So a lot of these options are still open, but we're, we're trying to work as close with him as we can, and they provided a lot of great information for us, too. Mr. Bowlen, anything I've left out?
And again, Mr. Dollar, thank you and your committee so much.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Jared.
Mrs. Jones, thank you. Mrs. Michael, did we get any requests to address us publicly? None? All right, so we will now move into our consent agenda. We're going to start with you, Mr. Leary.
Well, Madam Chair, I have nothing to pull.
Okay. Mrs. Wagner?
I have nothing to pull.
Mr. Buckles?
I spent three or four days coming by here last week, and I was by here yesterday, so I'm good right now.
Okay. Mrs. Pickens?
I have nothing to pull.
And I have nothing to pull.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as, as requested.
All right, motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consent agenda as it is printed, and it was second by Mr. Phil Leary. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes, none. Our motion carries. We are now into emergency session.
Madam Chairman, I would move approval of L. 1, the overnight trip for the Palaca Junior/Senior High School girls weightlifting, and the justification that it is time-sensitive for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept item L. 1, the weightlifting girls team that advanced to state to visit Lakeland and compete, and it was second by Mrs., well, it was a motion by Mr. Phil Leary and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Questions? Hearing none. We're ready to vote. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes, none.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item L. 2, professional and technical services expect more educational consulting justification, explanation time-sensitive.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item L. 2, expect more educational consulting. And second by Mr. David Buckles. Question? Discussion? Hearing none. We're ready to vote. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes, none. Our motion carries. We are now out of the emergency session, and we are now ready for our new business. Item N. 1, we'll start there.
Okay, so in your packet from Solid Rock Property Group, I've included a letter of support from the mayor of Interlochen, Ken Larson, and also, also have an email, I think, included from Travis Woods that talks about whether or not it will interfere in future revitalization plans as it relates to the special facilities rebuild of, Chris, I'm sorry, Interlochen Junior/Senior High School. Also, a statement from the principal saying that they aren't currently using that portion of property. I also reached out to the city commission, the chairperson of the city commission, and she said she didn't want to speak for the entire commission, but they are meeting today. And they will talk about it just as you guys will have the opportunity to talk about it here today. And again, it's a letter of intent. Also have a letter, I think, in your packet from Larry Harvey and his support of the idea. What I don't think I included in your packet are a couple of things. The original offer was lower than the million dollars that's currently listed, and I did ask, could they increase the price before I bring it to the board, and they did. And then Solid Rock Property Group also gave a listing of all the businesses that they were associated with or have been. I don't think you have that in your, your packet. I did ask the intent, what they wanted to build, and they said a convenience store. So when I looked at all of the, again, businesses that they've been associated with in the past, only two convenience stores I saw were Circle K and Wawa, and there's already a Circle K within a rocks throw distance from that particular lot. So they are here to answer any, any questions that you have. Again, it's just a letter of intent. We would have to get any input you guys have now if you're in favor of this idea, and then negotiations could begin on an actual contract. The three gentlemen here today are Anthony Kachuk, Ronald McKay, and Cord Butler. And again, they are from Solid Rock Property Group, and I'll turn it over to them, and I'll stand by as well in case you have any questions.
Good afternoon. My name is Anthony Kachuk with the Solid Rock Property Group. Appreciate you all taking the time to, to hear us this afternoon. We'd be looking to purchase that property on the corner in Interlochen. And as Mr. Bowlen said, we would be interested in developing a convenience store there and happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
If you're that close to a school, can you sell alcohol?
It depends. I haven't looked up the code in that particular municipality, so I'm not sure what the code says. Everything's different.
I think you can sell beer and wine, but no, they don't sell, you know.
I get it. I understand.
I had a question. Where did Mr. Bowlen go? Oh, I just, did, did y'all have an appraisal on it, or were you using the property appraisers?
No, sir, we, we haven't gone that far. It's 1.2 acres. And I know, you know, just the, on the city rolls, it would fall well below a million dollars, what they're asking. So I haven't gone, we haven't gone that far yet. The purpose of today's meeting is just for you guys to discuss this concept in the sunshine, so I can get some direction of the collective will of the board on whether or not to proceed with this or not. This is your opportunity to bat this around.
Certainly an excellent price based on some of the comps I saw, and, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor.
I just want a visual image. Help me.
It's the old Sid Martin, it's the old ball field there on the corner, in the old Sid Martin building area. Sandy out there.
Board attorney also has a comment. Board attorney has a question.
So just to help you get oriented, Ms. Giar, before we entertain the question, if you think about the corner of 315 and Highway 20 in Interlochen, where the Sid Martin building is, is currently located. This lot runs almost all the way up to the Sid Martin building. ROTC used to occupy that building, and they use that as their parade marching field, so if you would see the cadets on the corner.
Yes.
Question has to do with timing. The letter of intent that I looked at didn't indicate any timeframe within which the negotiations would take place or be completed. It was sort of open-ended. Do you have any idea of what sort of, what sort of timeframe you're looking at in, in entering the negotiations and reaching a point where you guys decide either to buy or not buy?
So, excuse me. The, I believe it has 120 days for inspection period, and then 180 days for permitting. We would be willing to enter negotiations soon or as slow as possible.
I think that was after the contract was signed, though, right?
Correct.
And my question has to do with between the letter of intent and the actual execution of a contract, which is binding. Obviously, the letter of intent is not. You have any timeframe as to how much time would go between the letter of intent and an actual contract?
I could have a contract to you in the next week.
Mr. Bowlen, on our map, what is the light blue? Like, that's, we don't own that property?
I think we sold that to, that was Hanford's property, I believe.
Right, and those are actual.
That's not School Bus Road.
No, School Bus Road is a little bit further to the right.
So, that's.
Exactly right. We don't own that property, I don't think.
Okay, so that's just a house.
Right. And then McDonald's is here.
And one of Larry Harvey's, some of his input was about that particular home and that family, and just, you know, extending, actually, he had two comments, and these are to you as much as they are to the board, but Commissioner Harvey had some concern about that homeowner's property and whether or not they would be at some point bought out or if there was at least a conversation with whoever. He thought that would be a real good idea. And then his other suggestion was the Sid Martin building itself. If you guys would be, Solid Rock Property Group, would you be in favor of perhaps a revitalization program or, you know, just something to show that building some love just because it's not on the historic register?
Right.
But there are some efforts going on right now to have that building placed on the historic register, and for a very long time, it had the distinction of being the oldest school building in the state of Florida that was still operational. So, and it's still on our campus, and, you know, if we wanted to rebuild that campus, we have to have a lot of very close consideration about exactly what we do with that building, whether it's relocated or just revitalized or whatever. And of course, we'd have to see community input as well. Yes, sir. And so, all of those things have to be concerned, but, you know, Larry Harvey is the county commissioner for that area. He said, reach out to them and see if they could do anything to help show some love to that building, if I can coin what, exactly what he said.
Well, I mean, for those that have been here a while, we understand what Sid Martin did to try to preserve that building, that old school there. But, you know, my concern is fuel trucks, you know, what kind of fuel you're selling, what is it gonna be? Tanker trucks and all coming in there, and school buses turning off 315 and 20, and we'd already have a Circle K over there close by. I understand, you know, heck, Bud Usino, when I was a kid, had a filling station across the road over there, but, I mean, the high school wasn't in a situation like it is now. That's the only concern I have, is the volume of fuel trucks and all, and the proximity to the school, and, you know, another place for kids to hang out before school, but I don't think they'll be able, most of the kids that are transported would not be able to go over there anyway, so.
I don't know if this helps or not, but, again, going back to the rebuild of that particular school, it's going north of 315.
Going north.
So, where price is sitting right now is ground zero.
That helps a lot.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, I would move in one that we give the superintendent and Mr. Bowlen the direction of moving towards a contract on that property to bring back to us for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we give Superintendent Serency and Mr. Bowlen the leeway, if you will, to go a step further, look into the sale and negotiating with the company, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens in a further discussion.
My only concern remains, you know, when they get it, what if they change their mind? What do they do? What are we legally bound to? That'll be for the attorney and superintendent to kind of.
Well, they're bound by the zoning for the city.
I understand.
But I would like to see, like, Commissioner Harvey, the home that's next to it.
That building is, I've been through it. In fact, I went through it with former principal, and it's on its last leg.
No.
I was talking about the home on 20.
The whole, the old family home, oh, okay.
It's back there, yes.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any further discussion?
That's, my biggest problem is I don't know what's gonna happen when you put that many people coming in and out with gasoline, and I don't care if you move down to where price is, it's still, the proximity bothers me, but the price sounds really nice, but that's my only problem.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries for one. Okay. All right, and she said we can't do the amendment.
Okay, all right. Madam Chairman, I would move for approval and consensus to advertise amendment of policies 1210, 2423, 3210, 3217, 4210, 4217, 511.01, 5410.01, 5710, 5772, 7217, 7540.03, 8330, and new policy 5782, per the recommendation of Neola.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept item N. 2, consensus to advertise the amendment policies that were listed, and second by Mr. David Buckles. All right, we're ready to vote.
And we have, and we're gonna do a roll call.
Oh, roll call, yes, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting that.
Okay, roll call vote, District 1.
Advertise.
District 2.
Advertise.
District 3.
Advertise.
District 4.
Advertise.
And District 5.
Advertise.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend we approve new business number 3, consensus to advertise amendment of policies 0141.2, 2120, 2270, 2271, 2460, 2520, 2522, 2623, 5410, 5410.01, 5420, 8305, 8405, 8420, and new policy 2455, per Neola Update, Volume 24, Number 2.
Did you say 8420?
I sure did.
Yes, you got that.
Second.
All right, motion, oh, okay.
I just have a question on it.
All right. Do we take the question now? Go ahead.
I had, I spoke to Susan about some minor changes, typographical errors, and was told that they were all corrected. I just want to confirm that, because I didn't, okay, I did not, okay, great. I just didn't have time to go back and check that, but it was nothing minor, and everything should be fine then.
Okay, all righty. All right. It was motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consensus to advertise amendments to the policies that were listed, per Neola Update, Volume 24, Number 2, and it was second by Mr. Phil Leary. We have had our discussion, well, our question in a discussion. Hearing none, we're ready to vote. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
We got a roll call.
Oh, roll call. I keep wanting to do that.
Roll call.
I apologize again.
Roll call vote, District 1.
Advertise.
Advertise.
District 3.
Advertise, sir.
District 4.
Advertise.
And District 5.
Advertise.
All righty.
Madam Chair, I'd like to offer a motion for item N. 4, consensus to advertise amendment of policy 6144 and to rescind policy 8470.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens, consensus to advertise the amendment policy that is listed, and second by Mrs. Linda Wagner. All right, we're ready to vote. Well, roll call. I got it. I saw the look. I'm ready.
Roll call vote, District 1.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, one is to advertise and one is to rescind, so should we, when we roll call, are we?
We still have to advertise.
Have to advertise.
You have to advertise or rescind? Okay, thank you. Advertise.
District 2.
Advertise.
District 3.
Advertise.
District 4.
Advertise.
District 5.
Advertise.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend that we advertise the final selection alternative for social studies adoption.
I thought.
I'll second that for the discussion.
She has a presentation.
But I thought we went through all this at the last workshop we had.
We had to go through all the.
We did. I feel the same way. It feels a little bit Groundhog Day-ish, just a little bit. But I'm happy to be here to share with you all of the great things that we have planned with the help of our expert teacher reviewers and our parents who came and joined us for the Elimination and Selection Committee meeting. We get to talk now about the things that happen inside the classroom, and those are the things that make me the most excited. So, I hope that you will humor me for just a few more minutes as we first attend to the business of social studies. But we do, just for clarity, today, we have a vote on social studies to accept or not accept the instructional materials plan as designed, and those are the choices that I brought you all last time. Mr. Buckles is exactly right. We opened up, you may recall, the last time we were together, we opened up a period of a 20-day feedback window and public review period. We publicized it on our website, we publicized it here in the meeting, we shared loud and proud with all. I don't know if this is great news or not great news, but I'm happy to say we did not get any additional feedback than that that we got that day from our parent reviewers and our teacher expert reviewers. So, with that being said, today I bring you the Social Studies Instructional Material Plan. Give me just a minute, and I'll get it up here on the screen for you. Here we go. And so, just really quickly, to help with all of our memories, you may recall that we brought to you last time that our folks picked a primary choice with an alternate recommendation to only be used in the case of backordered issues or issues with contracts with textbook companies, et cetera, in terms of social studies, which we hope we do not have to face this school year. So, for civics, we are recommending McGraw-Hill as our primary, Savis as our alternate. U.S. History, you're gonna feel some commonalities here, McGraw-Hill, with the alternate being National Geographics Engage. For World History, McGraw-Hill, with the alternate being Savis Learning Company. U.S. Government was the one, one subject area where they really preferred Savis as well, so did our parent. So, we went with Savis as the primary, McGraw-Hill is the alternate choice. For U.S. History Honors, McGraw-Hill, with National Geographics Engage being the alternate choice, and Economics, McGraw-Hill, with no alternate selected. They were very firm on McGraw-Hill or we are not interested. In terms of our elementary folks, you may recall that they really loved the Analytic Orange program, and so, we are recommending Analytic Orange as our primary selection for K through 5, with Gallup aid being the alternate choice. And we brought you lots of details about all of those programs last time, and I shared with you, we did not have any additional public input, staff input, et cetera. It all came out in that Elimination and Selection Meeting, and so, today, we need to take a vote on whether or not to approve the Instructional Materials Plan for Social Studies. And that includes what I just shared with you, all of those primary and alternate choices. And so, that's our first order of business, is just voting on whether or not you accept those recommendations from our Elimination and Selection Committee, which did contain, you may recall, representatives from every school, parents, as well as some district expert reviewers as well.
That's what your motion was, was for approval.
That is correct.
And that was, my second was, so we're good to go, we're ready.
All right. Been motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the final selection and the alternatives for the social studies adoption, as brought to us by Mrs. Azula, and it was second by Mr. Phil Leary in a further discussion. Hearing none, we're ready to vote. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Perfect. So, a quick reminder, we have a 30-day contest window that opens tomorrow that will be made available on that same webpage as the survey. The public review links are still up there, so folks can still go get a handle on what really is it, but they'll have the 30-day contest period, and at the close of that 30-day contest period, if no one contests the adoption, then we'll move forward with purchasing. If they do contest, we'll have to pull a special committee. We already have a date on the calendar for that, but hopefully, given that we've had so much feedback proactively in this one, my hope is that we will be able to continue purchase materials and get a great plan in place to train and support our wonderful teachers by the end of the year.
Yes.
All right, so now, let's switch gears. We're going to science. I will have a few more words for this one, so I'm sorry in advance, but I need to make sure you understand all the pieces here. So, here are the science handouts, and I'm gonna just take just a second and get that pulled up here on the screen. So, today for science, we are not voting. This is just to let you know about the Science Elimination and Selection Committee Meeting that was held yesterday, all day in this boardroom, and I first want to start very similar to how I did with social studies, and that's with a great big thank you to our science team reviewers. So, we'll start with our district team. We had myself, as well as Carrie Paul, who's here today, and Laura Shetel, one of our district reading coaches, also participated from the district level in the science review. But in addition to those wonderful folks, we also had all of these wonderful folks that you see before you on the screen right now. There are just so many, it's almost too many to list. These are our teachers, but we did have parents in attendance as well, and we were so pleased. One of our parents in attendance actually had a background in biology, so it was just a really great day of lots of conversation and lots of wonderful shared perspectives. So, a reminder of the science timeline. I told you, we met with them, with the review committee, yesterday, that was on the 12th. Today, I'm coming to you to open the public review and feedback window for 20 days, which will officially open tomorrow on our website. During that 20-day public review period, we do something a little different than other districts in which we do seek additional input, not for the purpose of vote, but for the purpose of helping us think through what may be some challenges, successes, other things we need to be thinking about with these particular materials. When that window closes on March 5th, we'll come, I'll come back to you again on March 19th with a vote, asking you to vote on the Instructional Materials Plan for Science. Then, depending on that vote and the outcome of that vote, we'll open a 30-day contest period and maybe have to have a special hearing if necessary. And finally, if we don't have to do any of that, if we don't have any contestants to the adoption on May 7th, our plan will be to start purchasing those materials and creating the plan for science implementation this summer and in the coming year. So, let me show you just quickly where we landed with our science selection. So, you can see here, this is elementary, it's a little small on the screen, but this is really easy to address, in that K through 5, really K through 6, selected McGraw-Hill as the primary choice. Again, you see some themes here with McGraw-Hill this time, coming in with lots of tools and resources that are self-contained within the program that our teachers really appreciated. Our secondary choice, our alternate, if you will, is Florida Savis Science Explorations. And you can see, just like in the social studies adoption, these are those public links that will appear on our webpage, and they're here for you as well, so that if you want to go explore any of these curriculum, you are certainly able to do that. For our K through 5th grade folks, we did have all reviewers who attended the meeting rank using Mentimeter, and you can see McGraw and Savis were very close frontrunners there, with McGraw-Hill just kinda eking it out in the end, but our folks were feeling very excited about that. And here's just a little bit of what they pulled out from McGraw-Hill that was really exciting. You can see here with an explicit focus on standards progression using prerequisite, FSAS as a launchpad, and purposeful lesson structure that promotes deep conceptual. FSAS as a launchpad, and purposeful lesson structure that promotes deep conceptual understanding and robust practice and assessment resources, Florida Science helps every student seamlessly navigate the FSAS and achieve success. And so in this program, you're gonna find a number of things to help prepare students, not only fifth grade students, but all students, for what they are going to see when they do take that summative assessment in fifth grade. And you may recall that the summative in fifth grade through the state does not just assess fifth grade science standards, it assesses third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade science standards. So it's really important that we all have similar tools that help us prepare our students for what they need to show mastery on at the end of fifth grade. The other thing our teachers really loved about this science program is they felt like it promoted literacy. There were so many, not only texts, but multimedia kinds of tools with this program that that really spoke to our folks. They felt like, in fact, we asked them a question, how likely with this curriculum would you feel the need to supplement outside of this curriculum? And this one actually was one of the best ranked one from our teacher reviewers in terms of feeling like they would have exactly what they need at their fingertips, which was very important to us and our team. Here, this just highlights some of McGraw-Hill's digital engagement strategies. They have amped this up with a whole platform called Actively Learn. Actively Learn includes things like virtual labs, which again, thinking about teachers, teacher prep time, and the time that they very often spend outside of classroom time, preparing and getting things together for science, was really important to our reviewers. They were excited to know that on those days, when maybe I didn't get to pull all of these hands-on pieces, I still have a virtual platform where I can read, I can do this lab, but in a virtual kind of context, which was very appealing, again, to our teachers. Here are just a few of their comments. I think it's always great when you can see what did they say, not just what am I saying, but these are two of their quotes. Our K through fifth grade teacher reviewers said, "The overall layout is so easy, everything is scripted, and there isn't much left to the imagination. This would be very easy to pick up and for students to follow." And then you'll see another person said, "I love the scaffold, the text, Kahoot partnership, key moment pacing option, formative quick checks, and other great pieces. This seems to give the best alignment to our standards without providing so much for teachers or students to get lost in. Looking at the content as a whole, it seems to have enough text, interactive pieces, and visual aids to help students understand each topic." So again, we just wanted to highlight just a little bit of what happened in that meeting. You're gonna notice, I have also included, just for you, board, the links, hyperlinks to their brochures, because sometimes those links are great, but even with the digital links, we love to have the brochure to help guide us. So I have included those throughout the presentation for you for each one of the curriculums at the different grade levels. I'm gonna go ahead and jump us forward to comprehensive science in our secondary courses. Much like elementary, you're gonna see a common theme here. For comprehensive science, seventh through eighth, we chose McGraw-Hill as our primary recommendation, and Savis as an alternate. For environmental science, that's the one that stands out as a little different here. Our folks did choose Engage National Geographic for environmental science, and I'll give you a little bit on why in just a few minutes. They had just a few stellar pieces for environmental that weren't in all of the programs that made our folks very excited. So it's Engage National Geographic as the primary, McGraw-Hill as the alternate. Marine science and biology, you can see they followed suit with McGraw-Hill and Savis as their primary and alternates. For chemistry, again, you have McGraw-Hill and Savis. And finally, anatomy and physiology, we have McGraw-Hill with Engage National Geographic coming up again as an alternate for anatomy and physiology. So you may be wondering, what did our sixth through eighth grade teachers love about McGraw-Hill, and why did they stick with it again? So you have just a few of their comments again. There are multiple pacing options. This will be helpful as instructional time changes from sixth to seventh and eighth, which I loved that thinking. These, the materials contain a solid amount of content for instructional use. Texts, videos, images, virtual labs, questions, and assessment items. Items are marked clearly for alignment. Some work will need to be done by the instructor to prep and procure items for those hands-on true labs, but the true core resources for instruction and the monitoring of benchmark mastery are included. What a great thing to hear that from the mouths of our teachers. And then you have this at the bottom. Again, this curriculum is comprehensive, strategies to address all learners are included, and most instructional pieces are self-contained within the program, thus limiting the possibility of links and supplemental websites not working over time. So you can see, just even by their comments, we had some of the best of the best with us in the elimination and selection committee meeting. In fact, we had two teachers, I want to shout out really quickly, from Crescent City Junior Senior High, who actually stayed the duration of the entire meeting, meaning they came for K-5 and they did not leave until the last science curriculum was decided upon. And when I say that Dr. Parker and Ms. Eubank just really added positivity, expertise, they kept us grounded in the core rubric, and those two ladies, while the whole team did an outstanding job, those two ladies from start to finish were concerned not only about their subject in science, environmental and marine, but they were concerned about the science progression all the way up. And so I just cannot say enough about them. I could give you all the reasons why they all deserve kudos, but those two particularly, we just really thank them and Mr. Adams for allowing them to spend the entirety of the day with us. So for that sixth through eighth, you also have the brochure linked here. I have linked biology and chemistry as well, so that you can look at that as you have time. And then finally, I just really quickly want to give you some of the comments that they left about National Geographic learning in Engage in environmental science, because you may wonder, like I did, why only environmental science did they go this way? Well, they felt like for environmental, the curriculum brought that National Geographic quality of images, videos, and multimedia tools. And for environmental, they really felt like giving kids the opportunity to see some of those ecosystems through that lens of National Geographic really might make the difference in student engagement for some. And so we really appreciated that thought. They also said things like, "The materials provide functional labs that would assist in connecting the learning goals. Other than the labs, the only provided materials to connect, connect learning are Google Earth assignments, which would not be most helpful to my students to engage and encourage learning." And we asked them for a little bit more on that. Several of our teachers said, "You know, we can go other places now, but how nice is it to have it all self-contained within one program, so we can feel confident about what we are pulling for kids, and we can feel really good about the quality of those images and those graphics and, and videos." And so we really just appreciated that thinking, and again, having their expert voices were very important to us. And so while it is different, and it means we will be pulling one more curriculum into the fold, we're excited about what that may mean for the kids who are taking environmental science. I put a few images in here for you. I know it's been a long meeting, so I won't go through all these pieces with you, but please, as you have a chance, you have the brochure for environmental science here as well. And like I said, you also have those digital links, so no, you can absolutely use those. But like I said, those brochures just provide that little added, when I go into the links on the website, how do I know how to navigate? And that's there in the brochures. So today's meeting is going to kick off our public review and feedback window, again, this time for science. So tomorrow, starting tomorrow on our webpage, you're gonna see an added adoption timeline. I think this may be one of the first times in history, we've attempted to do two at one time, but our teachers are incredible, and so are our principals. So hopefully, hopefully this all is just as exciting for others as it is for me. So if all goes well, we'll close our 20-day public review window on March 5th. You will have a board, another board presentation with a vote. On March 19th, we'll open our contest period like we talked about. And again, with the hopes of being able to purchase and get teachers in to start training them before we even get out for the school year and on into the summer, so that they get all the same support that we have provided for folks like our ELA teachers and our math teachers. So it's pretty exciting. This last piece, you can just see is directions in case anyone needs them, how to get to the site, to get those public links so that you can view. You have step-by-step right here on the presentation, and I've also included the Google Form link right here for you all, in case you want to give additional input or feedback about those choices that our review and selection committee made. But all that is there for you, and just a huge thank you. It's hard to come at the very end of a meeting that has been so full of all the wonderful things, but I get very excited to talk to you all about what's happening in our classrooms, free of some of the other things. So I hope that I didn't take too much of your time, and I hope you leave here feeling just as excited about the possibilities for science and social studies in our district as I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buckles. Always thorough. All right, we are now ready for our board reports. I think that's the next item on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
All righty, so we'll start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
Okay, first, I would just like to thank Renee Huff and the CTE department and all the CTE teachers in our schools. I believe that the strength of a program, a program can look really vital on paper, but when you have excellent teachers that are very passionate about their subject, it just, it, it adds so much more to it. And I think we have an amazing group of teachers teaching our CTE classes. Just a few that stick out in my mind that are actually still teaching. Trish Saul's Allied Health Academy at Crescent City Junior Senior High School, she is amazing and dedicated, and so many students have graduated with certification, and maybe they didn't go on to let a certification limit them, it was more of a stepping stone toward becoming doctors, dentists, nurses. I mean, it's, it's just amazing. And I, I love that our, our district is so involved with CTE, because that reaches a whole different element of students, and it gives students a reason to come to school and be motivated and passionate about it. So I just thank them. I'd also like to thank and congratulate Coach Jeff Leese at Crescent City Junior Senior High School. He got his 100th win, and then they, actually, I think it was 101, that he, he beat the rival, Pearson Table, Pearson Taylor, for the district championship. A district championship is a great accomplishment, but when you beat your rival, it just feels just a little bit stronger. And then lastly, I would just like to say that I am extremely happy, but I know it's gonna be a lot of work. Catfish Festival's coming back to Crescent City the first Saturday in April, and the Rotary Club in Crescent City has funded millions of dollars of scholarships for our students, and they make it possible for kids to, to get at least two years of education. And really, all a student has to do is apply and, and have a little bit of need or success. So anyway, we're looking forward to working with the Swamp Cabbage Booth, and so y'all come, April 6th. And that's all I have.
April 6th. So Buckles?
April 6th, it's the first, and Swamp Cabbage Cutting, of course, would be the Wednesday prior. Dr. Snarcy, if you'd like to be involved in that, that would be a great.
Go in the swamp.
Mr. Buckles?
My dad started that with Mr. Bob Pickens, back when dinosaurs walked the earth, and they've had us, Mr. Buck Swamp Cabbage Booth ever since. So I spent a lot of years going down there before daylight, you know, maybe 3 o'clock in the morning, we'd cook till daylight and take cabbage to the Eagle Lions Park. What I wanted to report on and talk about, and fortunately for us, have a superintendent that has worked with us and, and he's handled discipline, and he's broke up enough fights and enough problems like we went through in this workshop today, that he understands what these principals are going through. Now, a principal like Mr. Adams that had these kids in elementary school and in their, you know, then their, when they were a middle to junior high, and now they're at the high school, they know him, and they're used to him. It's a little different for him to have the prior history with the kids, and they, they understand him, and it's a little different in Palatka with some of the stuff you get on social media, where there's been a modified lockdown, or, or, you know, shots fired in the community, or something like that. And, and the good thing about Rick is he's been at Palatka High when we've had to go through those things and, over the years. But there are some things that we can do that we haven't done, and, and he's been involved in them before, and we've talked about it. I mean, we, you know, you can expel a student for up to two years in the state of Florida, or the remainder of a school year, and then all of the next school year. We used to make announcements when things got bad over the intercoms in our schools and the community, that any child who knowingly fights or disrupts the orderly process of a school and refuses to stop, even after being directed by an adult, will be recommended for the maximum expulsion under the state of Florida allows in, in public schools. Now, it worked very well, and all, and, and most of the years that we did that, I only remember one child that was gone for up to two years. I remember Travis was a safety officer or dean or something at high school, and he called me one time in Tampa and asked, "Could we read that again over the intercom?" And, you know, and, and Rick was there, he understands. He, he just, we haven't quite gotten to that point, but with social media, everything is so instant, and every parent's worried about, "What's going on?" Well, you know, we're taking an abundance of caution. We've got armed personnel that we've had trained, working in all of our areas throughout the school district, a model, a national model for the state of Florida, so we're doing what we can to keep them safe. But there are things that the superintendent knows how to do, and he, he, I'm sure will do. We've, we've worked with, you know, everything from, you know, offering rewards for information leading to the arrest and conviction of somebody who would call in a bomb threat, or somebody who would say there's a shooting gonna happen in the school. I, I would, now that Travis Weaver, I see him back there, still here, ask him to maybe get with some of your friends throughout the state and see if they can find any way to track these anonymous cyber threats that are coming around, saying random district in the state of Florida are gonna have a bomb in them, or a shooting. There's gotta be a better way. I mean, we've got to be able to track these people down and, and get justice out of them. I mean, I don't, I don't want to go back on Good Morning America and things that we've dealt with in the past that weren't too pretty. I don't want to do like Sandy and I have done, and ride around with FBI agents looking for murdered kids in the woods that have been murdered by a classmate. This is serious business. And I enjoyed the presentation today. I think we've got some really good data that, you know, I had some concerns a couple of years ago about junior, senior highs, but now having my grandchildren, some of them going in at the earliest levels, we've got them in a bubble. They are protected. We've got AI, you know, abilities with, with photography to let you know if there's somebody who's made a threat in the community, or for a football game, or whatever. But I, I have to rely on Travis and the superintendent to keep us, you know, tell us what you need, if you need something, and you certainly have the ability and authority to offer a reward for somebody that keeps making these threats. And I don't know why the state of Florida hadn't resolved it by now, unless it's somebody that's way smarter than what we've got, but there should be cybersecurity that could stop this stuff. But, I mean, we've, you know, you could, we've looked at the cost of an alternative school again. I, I don't know that we're there yet, and I don't know that we're not there yet, but I know that it's, you know, one classroom's gonna be at least about, close pushing on a million dollars. And it's a, it is a lot of money. And I just, you know, having been through all the things that, over the years that I've been through, and I've, and we've lost kids, we've lost adults, we've had, you know, just problems in the communities, and they spill over, we are a mirror of society. Everything that happens in our communities spills over to our schools, and you know that. I'm talking, I'm telling Noah about the flood, most of you guys, but just, you just gotta let us know, Rick, if there's something. But just, you just got to let us know, Rick, if there's something, and I've said it until I'm probably driving everybody nuts, but I worry about things when I don't have anything to worry about, you know? But when I see that, and I see the fear, and then you got, you know, we've got kids that we don't want to be talking to their parents, and they get something, goes out on social media, some anonymous person puts something out saying, "They're got law enforcement, you know, presence at Palatka High, or at Interlocken High, or Crescent City here." And, well, there's a reason for that. That's to keep our people safe and secure. And it normally is from a threat that happened in a community or something, incident that happened, as it has been for decades. But it's gotten so immediate now with social media that it's just gotten out of hand. So, you know, we're going to navigate this thing, and we're going to get it down, and we'll figure it out. But, you know, Travis on cybersecurity, you got to, you got to keep us updated with what's going on in the state, so we can stop these random, somebody in Miami Dade sends a random threat throughout Florida and hits Putnam County with a threat, you know, it's just stupid. But we've got ways of dealing with this, and the superintendent knows. So he's, he's working behind the scenes when, when all this stuff goes out, and people really don't know what's going on. But, you know, you, we can put kids on the road for up to two years. And I can remember doing it and making those announcements and being front page of the newspaper over the years, when the district would do it. And parents show up mad because we're kicking kids out of school for two years. Well, you had a 40, 50, 60 kids, you only had one out of the whole bunch that was really inspired to recommend that got the two years. So I could go on and on, but.
Please don't.
I come down and meet behind closed doors most of the time, so. But Rick, you let me know.
Sure will, thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Wagner?
Well, I don't have much. I've been trying to recuperate from the Super Bowl. It was quite a long game.
One of those Taylor Swift songs.
Oh, gosh. But at least it was a good one. And I just wanted, there was, there was also, I mentioned some of the policy updates I'd already addressed, but I just wanted to say thank you, actually, because I questioned something else that was on our agenda today. Of course, as usual, I'm patched through to the right person immediately, but I was, without going into the specifics, I was questioning why there wasn't a cost on this item, and, you know, I was just under, not understanding it. And it was explained to me, and the reason I was, had concerns, is it had to do with student data privacy. And I was thinking, well, don't, why don't we have more information on this company or whatever? And it was explained to me that we're kind of approving the idea of going with this company, but before any contracts get signed or anything, our IT company has to confirm that it rises to the level required by our district and our state, and that they vet it very carefully. So I just wanted to say thanks for the explanation I received earlier today, because anything to do with student privacy, like Mr. Buckles was saying, social media and just everything nowadays is a concern when our privacy, and I can't imagine being in high school myself and having to worry about data privacy. It just, times have really changed over the years, obviously. I also wanted to say thank you to Holly, if you were the one that brought the animal folks in today. I think it is a wonderful combination to teach kindness to animals, to children, because A, children are often getting taught a lot of things besides kindness, and it does build the character traits that we want in children, the kindness and empathy. Plus, it might teach, reach some of our parents. It always frustrates me when I see parents with very, very, like toddlers, and they're getting, you know, a tiny chihuahua, and you know that little chihuahua's going to get, you know, sat on and thrown around a little bit. And learning to, I saw in the book, learning to match yourself to the right type of a pet can often avoid those pets ending up in kill shelters and all of that. And I love animals, and I love kids, and I think the two go very well together, but they have to be taught. So I think that's a really good program, and I hope, I hope we move forward with utilizing them. And in the sake of time, that's it for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor?
Chairman, I'll just say that I look forward to future workshops and hopefully agenda items that we can find a solution to get these certain kids out of the main campus body. And I don't understand how it can cost a million dollars a classroom, but, you know, I'm new, and so I don't understand all that. But we, as a board, you know, set policy and budget, and I might be the only one, but that's a priority for me moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just want to, real quick, just mention, I had the opportunity to attend a girls' basketball game. They were playing Swanee, and the game was great, but what was even greater than the game itself, in the corner as you walked in, was the boys' basketball team. And they sang, they cheered, nothing vulgar, they sang church song. They, they just had a ball cheering for those girls, and they won that round. The next one, they were eliminated, and now the boys are in, they will be playing, I think she said tomorrow, they're going to be traveling to the villages. Yeah, you told me about that ride. But we wish them well, and we just don't say enough about how vital these programs are for dropout prevention and for curtailing some discipline problems, too. You know, the coaches can sometimes get things out of the young people that we may not be able to get. And so it's just, it's just great, and want to commend HCA Florida Putnam Hospital for that recognition. That is awesome. Part of the community, giving back to the community, those that are in the trenches. And with that, Mr. Attorney?
I have nothing, Madam Chairwoman.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, a few public service announcements. Tomorrow is our spelling bee. spelling bee. Friday's our Black History Month celebration, and that's turned out to be a really popular celebration. Last week, we did the Feed the Need. We had a number of staff and students take part in the packing event, and over 30,000 meals were packed at Grace Church. The Employee, employees of the year recognition ceremony, kudos to our HR department and everyone that took part in that. Very nice ceremony at Grace. And also want to remind you that we are putting out podcasts again. It comes out every Wednesday, and we are really focusing on this, this CTE month. I interviewed some teachers already, Renee Huff, Black History Month, of course, interviewed our chair, she did a great job, and some of the other folks in town. So just go on that, and if you miss it, it's going to be on the website, you can link to it. Two more things I want to mention about our discussion today on discipline. This past week, I met along with the superintendent from Volusia Flagler and St. John's, and we're part of the Seventh Circuit. The state attorney called this meeting, and we met in Bunnell, had a good meeting, really talking about school violence and everything that's going on with our young people. So we are working cooperatively, trying to come up with solutions or recommendations. So I'll report back, and actually, our student services staff and our communications department will be doing some groundwork and coming up with recommendations for the superintendent, superintendents, but I'll bring them back to you. But we recognize there's a community problem out there, and we're trying to come up with ways to combat that. So, and at the same time, within our community, this, actually, the same day, we had a meeting, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Hestrom, Mr. Bowlen, and myself went and met with the sheriff's office representatives at the school. Kathy Oyster called the meeting at Palatka High School, and we talked about communication. And they had actually met the day before with Palatka Police Department. But a lot of this, even though the, some of these things that students do, our policies may or may not allow us to take action, the one thing we can do is we can communicate with each other. If there's an event that's happened the night before, we've got to know that before the school the next day.
Absolutely.
Because if, sometimes that stuff will spill over.
Yes.
And that's already happened. I mean, we've already addressed things because of that communication. So kudos to those other agencies, and Kathy Oyster for calling that meeting. And I don't know about you guys, I'm feeling pretty good about it so far, and it's a work in progress, but just know, we are working behind the scenes to keep our kids safe. And we're in a different world now, and if we don't stay ahead of it, and this social media thing is, that's a monster now. We're trying to stay ahead of it, too, for a number of reasons, but we recognize it, and we are truly trying to stay ahead of it and protect our kids.
Thank you, Rick.
Back to you.
Anything else to come before the board? If not, again, thank you all for hanging in there with us.
Thank you.